Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York.
I'd ask West Sparta Supervisor to sue her if she agrees with the supervisor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the meeting minutes of the last regular board meeting, the 27th, if it's appropriate consideration. Is there any changes that anyone would like to bring forward at this time? During none, I'd ask for a motion in a second, please.
Lester, does anyone have a second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? carried. We do have a public hearing scheduled for this afternoon. I'd like to ask Bill Bacon to please bring forward the topic of the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide information to the public regarding the community development block program, CBDG, micro enterprise. Consider comment regarding the proposed application being requested for submission by Livingston County. An application in the amount of $300,000 is being proposed to the New York State Office of Community Renewal, OCR, to provide grants in conjunction with capacity building and entrepreneurial assistance to support and foster the development of micro businesses to be located in Livingston County. Pending a successful outcome of the grant application, it is proposed that the county would then enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Livingston County Development Corporation to administer the funding. Entrepreneurial training will be a prerequisite of the grant funding, and technical assistance will continue to be offered to businesses on an as-needed basis. Anyone in person wishing to make a comment regarding this application needs to clearly state their name and township for the record and will be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. With this hearing being open, I'd ask, are there any members of the public who would care to speak about the topic of this hearing? Is there any member of the Board of Supervisors who would like to comment on this at this Hearing will remain open, and I associate questions again closer to the close of the meeting. We have some communications, please, Michelle.
The next conversation with the county will be held on Thursday, May 12, 2022, at 5:30 PM at the Caledonia Town Hall, 3109 Main Street, Caledonia. Please let me know today if you plan to participate in the Virtual Intercounty Association of Western New York Meeting hosted by Livingston County this Friday, May 13, at 9:30 AM. The special presentation will be on the Livingston County Sheriff's Office Training Complex. Receipt of New York State Office of the State Comptroller filing of Town of Groveland, Establishment of Water District Number One application. Receipt of notice that Genesee Country Express will publish their last print edition on May 26, 2022.
Thank you, Michelle. We have abstract of claims next. Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claim and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this abstract of claims? Hearing none, I will please.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted.
We also have privileges of the floor this afternoon. Mr. Chairman, I request privileges of the floor for the United Way campaign. Thank you, Mr. Dunning.
Thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to address the board today. I am proud and I hope that you all are too, to work with such a generous and community-minded county that supports our residents in so many ways, and that includes running an annual United Way campaign. United Way of Greater Rochester and the Finger Lakes is working 365 days a year to build stronger, healthier communities in this region. Together with thousands of donors and partners, we raise funds for critical programs, strengthen nonprofits, encourage collaboration across organizations, and advocate for positive change that reinforces our region's ability to thrive. Our support, no matter what the amount, combines with others through collective giving to make a big impact right here in our local communities. I'd like to ask our campaign coordinators that are with us today, Sue and Kim, to come on up. Our incredible coordinators donate their time and their hard work to make this campaign possible each year. They're not all here with us, but I would like to just recognize the coordinators that worked on this year's campaign. Sue Bagley from Office of the Aging, Andrea Bailey from the County Clerk's Office, Sue Carlock from Office for the Aging, Zach Cracknell from the Highway Department, Kim Kavanaugh from the Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Cheryl Manthe from the Department of Health, Amanda Schultz from the Sheriff's Office, Josh Tonra from the District Attorney's Office, and Jeffrey Winters from the Department of Social Services. Please join me in thanking them for their hard work. We would also like to say thank you to each employee who made either a one-time donation, a pledge through a payroll deduction, or purchased even dress-down stickers, a chicken barbecue. You have all helped us to raise these funds, and you have all made a difference. The check there. So today, we are proud to announce that together, the county employees have raised $28,165.66 for the United Way of Greater Rochester and the Finger Lakes.
Next, we have several resolutions on the board agenda.
Appointing member to the Livingston County Board of Health, Mayor Margaret Stilone. Appointing members to the Livingston County Community Services Board, Charles Keenan, Joseph Meakin, and Amanda Schultz. Proclaiming the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Month. Proclaiming the week of May 6 through the 12, 2022, as National Nurses Week. Recognizing May 27, 2022, as National Poppy Day. Appointing members to the Livingston County Industrial Development Agency, Livingston County Development Corporation, and the Livingston County Capital Resource Corporation, Mary Ellen Merrill. Proclaiming the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Appointing member to the Livingston County Workplace Violence Prevention Committee, Anthony Jarzina. Declaring surplus property Sheriff's Office.
I ask at this time for any discussion on the resolutions on the board agenda. Hearing none, I would like for a motion in a second. Can you please give a vote?
Who wants to?
Second, Davis.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? carried. I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted.
Now, we're going to keep in mind that some resolutions require a separate.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, County of Genesee, Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, there are two, National Medical Services, Inc., doing business as NMS Labs, Physical Therapy Professionals, and Veterans One Stop of Western New York, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Just one thing, Chairman. The funding source in the last one, which is Veterans One Stop, is actually New York State Office of Mental Health. It's not Livingston County's. That's the state funds coming in for the Dwyer program, so 0% local share budgeted. The funding source should be New York State OMA.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, New York State Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Social Services, Housing Trust Fund Corporation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this contract? Hearing none, I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Office for the Aging, New York State Office for the Aging.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Any questions or discussion on this grant award contract? Hearing none, I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Veteran Services Agency, Veterans One Stop of Western New York, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office of Workforce Development Youth Bureau, Catholic Charities, St. Ben Livingston, Cornell Cooperative Extension of Livingston County, Hillside Children's Center, Inc., Legal Aid Society of Rochester, New York, Inc., and New York State Office of Children and Family Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Mr. Dunning, authorizing the Livingston County Highway Department to purchase materials and services through contracts awarded by Genesee County, equipment rental, crack ceiling, and signed materials.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will please, Michelle.
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for the engineering, design, right-of-way, construction support, and construction inspection phases of a bridge New York culvert replacement project, New York State PIN number 4B NY43 Presbyterian Road over tributary to Keshakua Creek, Town of Mount Morris Fisher Associates.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a quick claim deed and related documents to transfer a parcel on West Lake Road, Town of Geneseo, McCord.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Declaration of Lead Agency, Classification of Seeker Action, and Adopting Seeker Negative Declaration for 2022 to 2023, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, Snowmobile Trails Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing submission of trail plan and trail system approval and application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historical Preservation for Snowmobile Trails Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Is there any questions on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department, Caledonia Trailblazers and Hillen Valley Riders.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Any questions or concerns on either of these contracts?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a sub-recipient agreement with Cataragas Community Action, Inc., CCA, to partner on development of a mobile home and manufactured home replacement program for the counties.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Is there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a co-development agreement with the Livingston County Land Bank Corporation for a mobile and manufactured home replacement program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Is there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Probation Department of Gary Language Services, LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Is there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Mr. Knapp, amending the 2022 Livingston County Budget. Department of Health, there are two. Highway, there are four. Planning and workforce development.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant application authorization for Livingston County Northern Border Regional Commission.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Any questions or discussion on this grant application?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North D'Antville, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York. I, 1711, absent 298, adopted. Resolution of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors, electing a cents-per-gallon rate of sales and compensating use taxes on motor fuel and diesel motor fuel in lieu of the percentage rate of such taxes pursuant to the authority of Article 29 of the Tax Law of the State of New York.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Yeah, I was gonna just gonna make sure everybody is aware of what this one is. It's passed unanimously out of ways and means on Monday. I had some questions from some members afterwards. I basically placed your email boxes on top of your desk, too, some county-by-county information for those that are considering or have considered it. The only thing I didn't have at the time was any sort of financial impact. We do have a very, very rough estimate, just to kind of let you know what that looks like. That the gallons of gasoline sold in this county by quarter is about 10 million gallons. So in the two quarters in question here for this time period, it's about 20 million gallons. And what essentially the counties that have done this and Livingston County's resolution does, you basically forego the few cents per gallon above that $3 that you would otherwise get in taxes times all those gallons. So what the math works out is, on a minimum, you're probably talking about 800,000, probably more in the million-dollar range for two quarters. As was referenced in Ways and Means, you know, you could talk about losses or not gains. So really, this is less money newly gained as opposed to a loss for the county. So that was also discussed. So just wanted to kind of put some numbers to perspective. The resolution wording legally has to be the mouthful that it is. Basically, what you're doing is you're foregoing for a two-quarter stretch the local tax that otherwise would be provided on that gallon of gasoline over three bucks a gallon. That make sense?
Doesn't, I certainly had some questions after Ways and Means about that tax relief getting through the end purchaser, being the customer, and certainly through that customer base. Anyway, other discussion. Yes, Mr. Fox.
Chairman, Ian sent out a list of counties that had already adopted, and one of them was Monroe County, which, right next door, they set their threshold at $2. That's going to mean some loss of sales for the neighboring townships, Caledonia, Evan, and Lima, where folks are just going to hop north and buy for a few cents less. I would recommend we go with two bucks.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of concerns regarding this that has come to light, and I've had a chance to think about this. My concern is, if we do this, are the proprietors and so forth, are they gonna still stay the same? Or are they, you know, because my concern is, if they stay the same, they keep the prices the same, then are they gonna pocket the money for themselves? That's a concern. And the other concern is that we did discuss in the other committee meetings was, how are we gonna, you know, pay for that loss? You know, we have a, like the Ask lobby way of paying for the loss that we would not have if we do do this. That is a concern of mine. And who's going to say that the bigger proprietors, and you know who they are, I don't need to mention names or anything, are they gonna, are they gonna go along with this and then help? Or are they gonna pocket the money that they could make from this? So those are a couple of concerns I have, and I want to throw on the table with that. I also, the state is doing it, other counties are doing it. My, I guess my point with this is that we see what they do, what do the other proprietors do with this? Do they keep their prices pretty much the same? And then where is that money going? Is that going in their pockets? So with that being said, I guess I'm a little leery of this. I have some concerns. I'm not sure at this point I can support it unless we come up with some answers to that. I know Shannon has mentioned that we can't, or they can't do anything illegal, or they can't price gouge, they can't do some of those various things. can't price gouge, they can't do some of those various things. You know, with me being in the, well, I was in the gas business at one point, too, and we put two or three cents in our pocket, we were lucky. And that was what we usually made, and there is no cap, my knowledge, that a proprietor can put on, you know? That's different, and I don't know about that. Please, somebody let me know. But I was talking to my brother this morning, and he said, yeah, we could put ten cents on it if we wanted to for a profit. That was pretty, pretty obvious. So, I guess that is one of my concerns. I don't have any more to say on that. I'm not sure I can support this right now. My suggestion maybe would be, we table this and see what the other counties do, see what other proprietors do, see what happens with the state. I don't know. Maybe that's worthy of a little bit further discussion. I don't know. The other question I have, is this time sensitive? Is this something we need to do today? I don't know.
As far as taking action today, if you wanted an effective date, started June one beginning of the first half of the quarter, you have to take action today because we started that day in May. It may be that time today.
I see, yeah, okay. I didn't know, okay.
You have to commence upon the commencement of a sales tax reporting period quarter. So, it would have to start in June one for the time period you are at right now.
Thank you, Mr. West, Mr. Fox.
My feeling is that people, the bleeding is happening now, and I don't know how long it's gonna happen, but it's been happening for a period of time. So, my feeling is the sooner we do it, the better. It's hard at making up for the, for the, for the money's not received. We've got lots of fund balance. We've got money from the, from the government, you know, this, you know, the Recovery Act funds that we're handing out to anybody that asks, or people that ask, groups that ask. Say that we, we take it on the chin for the dollars that we don't take in. We're not losing them, we're not taking them in. And we try to help the people in this county. And that's about all I have. Livingston County, we've said it a thousand times, we've got lots of money. And I'm not saying that we're rich, but we've got lots of money. And, you know, I mean, people, people make requests for our, for our recovery dollars, and we seem to be pretty generous with them. Must be generous to the people in our communities. Nothing else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sues.
Mr. Chairman, I am adamantly opposed to this and for the following reasons. One, you want to help the residents of our county, that's our, our property owners and our residents. This fuel reduction and, and sales tax on the fuel is going to, a lot of situation is going to out-of-town truckers, out-of-state people that come through town, stop at their truck stops, and they're the ones that are gonna end up benefiting. As you well know, and the other supervisors know, that the sales tax is not only with the county, but it's also shared with the towns. If, Calabonia may have lots of money, but Town of Sparta is tight on a budget, especially when we're looking at eight point six percent inflation rate. This is gonna hurt our budgets, it's gonna hurt our, our town highway departments. Assessments have gone sky high. This sales tax goes directly to offset property taxes for our residents and, and the people in our county. And to give that to, sales tax deduction, which amounts to maybe five or six cents a gallon right now, when we're at four twenty-five, four forty, diesel fuel is much higher than that. That's not the place to, to give this. This is a feel-good thing, it's not a practical and, and something to help directly for our residents of our county. So, therefore, I'm not gonna object to unanimous consent today on this, but we do have several supervisors that are not present for this vote today, and I'm concerned about the fact that it was not on the Ways and Means agenda. And so, therefore, a lot of us didn't realize that this was gonna be discussed at Ways and Means. So, as far as the coming out as unanimous out of Ways and Means, I, I don't know that everybody had all the information at that point in time. It does feel good, I'll give you that, but I don't think it's in the best interest of our residents and our property tax in the county. So, that's my position.
And I did vote yes at Ways and Means, but I had several questions that I thought about afterwards that.
Sure.
Due diligence for myself personally and the residents of Evan, I had to get some answers.
Yep.
Other, yeah, why don't we let everybody go first, then we'll go back down. Any other first thing? Mr. Knapp, then I'll get the.
As Chairman of Ways and Means, after the meeting yesterday, we actually received more information than we had at our meeting. And now, we are not sure where the savings may go, whether to turn or not, but it's a million dollars. Sales tax is Livingston County's number one source of income. If we keep the million dollars, we can put that back to the people who live in the county and form a tax relief for all of our cover. Either committee grant areas in this, and I would have trouble supporting this knowing what I know now after the Ways and Means meeting.
Thank you. Devin, have any questions?
Yeah, I stand on the fence on this. I've seen it going across the counties. I did vote to support it. I think any kind of relief that we can get of our citizens is good. I'd like to trust that the businesses within our county are actually going to pass that savings on. Even if they don't, the counties that surround us are doing this. So, you're gonna have people leaving our county to go there to get gas, and gas is not going to be the only thing they get. There's going to be other things. If I'm gonna drive to Monroe County to get, save money on gas, I'm gonna shop there, too. So, I looked at it across the board. And again, this is money we don't have right now. If the state of New York hadn't said anything, we probably still wouldn't get this. But I understand there's a concern of a million dollars, potential loss, coming back in extra funds. I don't know. I, I just, I would support this because I think it's what's best for our community and for our citizens.
I think if we have the opportunity to help the citizens, that we should do that. He's basing it on ten million funds, I mean, of gallons, but we don't know if they're gonna sell that. I mean, with the price of gas, everybody is cutting down, so that ten million could go down to eight million, we really might not see a loss or any additional revenues. So, it's, you know, my feeling, if we can help the citizens, let's help the citizens and see where we are.
Thank you, Paul, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Wachy. I'll get to the.
Is there any reason that the money that we took in, we couldn't do it to take it off taxes? Other words, your land tax, they have that percentage for each person's land taxes to help them better that way than just taking, not give it at all?
I mean, in a one-for-one match kind of a situation, I mean, it really depends on what the end assessment looks like, what our rate's gonna look like, and what our levy's gonna look like. So, we can't say with certainty what, one, we're gonna get, and two, what you would do, wanna do with working with me on the budget for the one-for-one match. So, in theory, if you had a million dollars more at your disposal to be able to budget, it's a million dollars less that has to come from someplace else, you know, capturing costs, capturing revenues, whatever the case may be. I mean, that's, that's always the case. The point, the point that was made with respect to the revenue situation for 2022 was, last year's sales tax was about forty million. We're running at about a ten to fourteen percent increase this year. So, the thought was, what was the budget? It was thirty-nine million. What's the actual going to be this year? It's probably going to be, you know, much more than that, probably forty-three, forty-four million dollars. And reasoning being on the reduction impact, could we afford or not afford to lose what we would lose by not capturing the four to six cents per, you know, gallon of gasoline sold above three dollars? That's, that's the difference. So, instead of making forty-four million dollars this year in sales tax, we might make forty-two-five, or forty-three, or forty-three-two. And how things shake out.
The answer is to clean out Washington.
That's not on the agenda.
Well, I understand that, but that's the bottom line.
I'll express favor for this. I think we're in an unusual time. Going into 2020, we were looking at a potential of twenty percent loss or greater in sales tax. We've benefited from the last few months already. We have received ARCA funds and are in a good position financially. I'm not cavalier about this, but I think it's a way of saying to our citizens, we're here, we care, it's a small thing we can do. I prefer not to collect it versus give it back, just because we don't typically give it back. Not positioned to do that very easily. So, we're timing, we'll put a time limit on it. It's, it's structured, it's not just a willy-nilly big deal. And if people don't take the three cents off, that's still gonna be three cents in our economy. And I think if people are gonna travel out of the county to get three cents or four cents less gas, that'll, that'll handle the pump situation here in, in town. People won't buy from people that don't pass this on. And if we advertise it properly, if we get it in the paper that it's happening, then it'll take care of itself.
No, I just, the only other thing, I have, I had a chance to talk to some of the constituents out there as well, and their concern was as well as mine, how are we gonna pay for the deduction, you know, was it gonna be out of the tax lobby? They didn't want to be taxed any further. And so, at that point, I didn't have an answer. A little bit clearer now. Oh, and all the folks I've talked to, even in the surrounding towns that around me are in favor of, they don't want to be taxed another way. They'd rather have it being taxed by the gas rather than land or whatever. So, just, just food for thought as well. So, I have had a chance to talk to folks and get a feel for that as well. So, that's all, thank you.
And what's your thought, starting out mentioning the two verses of threes, or any thoughts on what Ian was adding?
It's, it's.
Look at the spot he's at.
It's entirely up to the county board to set that via the resolution. So, the data that I sent you earlier speaks to the individual counties and what they did. As we reported, a little bit of a mixed bag. There's even a four dollar in there, you know? So, there's a couple of twos, a couple of threes, and then there's a four dollar in there. So, I mean, it's probably up to you to do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be transparent and see if anybody better.
I mean, just food for, food for thought. One last thing, I mean, the last like eighteen quarters, the average price per gallon is two eighty-one. So, you know, I think that's why probably people were, if they were setting that number, they were probably even three or north of three range because there's at least some sort of expectation, which goes back to 2013, fourteen, at three sixty-five. And 2021, twenty-two was three thirty-nine. Obviously, it's much higher than that now.
I like the idea of the two dollars, but I, I don't think we're gonna see in the next two quarters. It's gonna get a little three bucks. So, I think the twenty is a good one, but I think we'd always jump for a little if we got down even anywhere near three bucks.
We wouldn't be doing this.
We, I think to Ivan's point, you know, if you just take that million dollars and spread it out and put it in your levy, the impact is normal feeling, frankly. We talked about the fourteen percent. We're at fourteen percent this year based on what we reported. Our last year, ours was up hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, again, this is something that we're not losing money, we're just not taking that extra million bucks. Everybody's gonna be above average on their sales tax, including the county. We budgeted thirty-nine million, and we're gonna take in, we take in, we get everything back, and we take in forty thousand, we're still over our budget. So, I mean, I still, I still support it.
Thanks, Sue.
As someone who lives in a small rural township that has no gas stations, no business district, no commercial district, everybody in Westfarta has to drive to get anything to go anywhere. So, if we can save him a few pennies per gallon, I'm totally for it. And no public transportation either, I'll throw that in, we have no reliable public transportation. So, people have to drive, school, shopping, work, visiting, whatever. So, let's, let's save him a penny cent a gallon.
No, I'd say my big concern is over, will it actually get past that? And will it all back for our residents, maybe hope it does? Will please yourself.
Evan.
No.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
No.
Geneseo.
Yes.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Yes.
Livonia.
Yes.
Mount Morris.
Yes.
North Danville, Nunde.
No.
Ashen.
No.
Portage.
No.
Sparta.
No.
Springwater.
Yes.
Westfarta.
Yes.
York.
No.
One minute. Eyes ten ninety, no, six twenty-one, absent two ninety-eight, adopted. Mr. Knapp. Amending the 2022 Livingston County Salary Schedule, Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes seventeen eleven, absent two ninety-eight, adopted. Adopting Director of Long-Term Care for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Justin A. Bayless.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this appointment?
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York. Eyes seventeen eleven, absent two ninety-eight, adopted.
Congratulations, Justin. Justin, would you like to say a few words or answer?
I noticed we, we said we were adopting you, but we really meant we were appointing you. Yesterday, I got a thank you, meet and greet, so I didn't prepare speeches. But, Mr. Chairman, supervisors, I just want to thank, thank you for putting your trust in me. Been a very difficult two years for the nursing home industry, really. And I'm really proud of this opportunity, and I think we're gonna get there. I met the team, I'm really excited who's in place there. I feel like we can get there for sure, except for get the building back to where it was.[1769.81] I have a strong passion for the geriatric population, and I hope I can meet your needs there. It's brought a wonderful environment for all.
Appointing Director of Community Mental Health Services, Lynette Green.
Mr. Chairman, I move a resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Is there any questions to discussion on this resolution?
Avon.
Hi.
Caledonia. Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Hi.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dantville. Nunde.
Hi.
Ashen.
Hi.
Portage.
Hi.
Sparta.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Sparta.
Hi.
York. Eyes 1711, absent 298, adopted.
Congratulations, Lynette. Yes. You're looking man up and down.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to continue my career here in Livingston County. For 30 years, I've worked in many different human services, education, and clinical settings. And what really excites me now is an opportunity to bring it all together and have an impact on this community and its system of care as a whole. Mental health issues have been on the rise for years, and within the past decade, there's been much public attention drawn to mass shootings, violence. The COVID pandemic, the opioid epidemic have all added to the stress of our system in addition to the largest workforce shortage ever seen in our field. This is a recipe for a full-blown behavioral health crisis in America. The task of addressing these issues is mighty, and only by working with all of our stakeholders in the community are we gonna be able to support the individuals. I believe in a focus on prevention and a population health model in addition to treating those who are already in our system so that we can have an impact on both the mental health system and reduce the mental health population in our forensic system. With that said, I'm eager to meet with all of those stakeholders to continue the conversation on how to creatively and efficiently meet the needs of your constituents. And again, I thank you for trusting me to take on this role for your people. Thank you.
We do have a public hearing still open. I'll ask again if there are any members of the public wishing to speak at the public hearing. Any board supervisors wishing to kind of bring down our, close the public hearing at this tone? And if you have objections, please, Michelle.
Authorization to submit a grant application to the New York State Office of Community Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Chair, no, I'll go, please, Michelle.
Avon.
Hi.
Caledonia. Canisius.
Hi.
Geneseo.
Hi.
Groveland. Lester. Lima.
Hi.
Livonia.
Hi.
Mount Morris.
Hi.
North Dantville. Nunde.
Hi.
Ashen.
Hi.
Portage.
Hi.
Sparta.
Hi.
Springwater.
Hi.
West Sparta.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 1711, absent 298, adopted.
Do you have any other things for the board?
Yeah, just a couple of small things. The Family Fest is this Saturday at Allerance Park. Eight to, eight or nine to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, so hopefully the weather holds up. I know it will. We're gonna have a fun time there, so please come if you can. There's an event this evening for Annie Chueco, the retiring Legislative Affairs staffer for Senator Pat Galvin at the Country Club in Geneseo. If you're able to make it, stop by, say hello to her. We did some recent press this week on the CNR achieving a four-star rating for quality of care measures. So very proud and thankful for the staff in order to make that happen, so that's great news. Also celebrated Nurses Week this week, had a breakfast at Building 2 at Public Health today to celebrate all of our nurses, one of which is here, celebrating her 25th anniversary and working for Livingston County, Jill Burley. So I want to thank her for her work with us. And we finally got the shared services money sort of uprooted from Albany to come our way that's been due for quite some time, so we'll be getting that back here probably this week. So that's great news as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board? Move to adjourn from Gresio.
It's on the second.
All in favor? I have a vote. Chair, I'm meeting with the chairman.